This evening before we start the meeting. No, and then planning staff. Okay, and then I'm gonna start off and I'm gonna see if there's any members of the public. That would like to give comment before we start the workshop. Meeting because I'm not sure if we're gonna have time for public comment. As at the end of the meeting.
Right, it's set after the work, a work session between the P and Z and the work group, so it wasn't. It's a public meeting, so you're able to listen, but there won't be. Joining in the conversation, so, but we figured upfront that there is public comment. If anybody did have comments they wanted to make upfront, um, we wanted to give folks the opportunity.
And it looks like, um, Jamie Gull. Jamie, I just unmuted you, you should be able to.
Yeah, can you hear me? I have a brief comment and believe my parents are there also and would like to make a brief comment. So yeah, I'm Jamie, I was born in Aspen, uh, Aspen Valley Hospital, um, and raised there. I now reside in Los Angeles with my wife and three-year-old, uh, we're both young professionals aerospace engineer. And my wife's in biotech developing cures for rare diseases. We would love to move back to Aspen to raise our son. Um, I love growing up there. Uh, however, as you guys are well aware. Much of the real estate in Aspen is out of reach, we're both working professionals who make a good living, a comfortable living. But the, most of the real estate still remains out of reach. Um, and our professions and income don't fit within the employee housing paradigm. Um, the only really truly feasible option is a CDU unit. Uh, on my parents' land and as a family, the current limitation of a thousand square feet is maybe workable, but barely. And increasing the square footage to fifteen hundred square feet on lots that can accommodate that. Would open up a lot of chances for the community to have more young working professionals like myself and my wife with children. In Picken County, and especially in professions outside of those most common in the valley. Help build a local community, support more equity and affordability. By giving more po- opportunities for positive growth and intensity in a, in a good manner. Which is one of the stated goals of the Vision 2050 Plan. And we noted that chapter four, section seven of the plan states that one of the land use pathways, um. For this is leveraging, uh, CDUs and EDUs. But we'd like to support including a statement in the Picken County Vision 2050 Plan. Beyond just leveraging CDs to actually increasing the maximum allowable square footage to fifteen hundred square feet. Allowing them to be detached and increasing enclosed garage opportunities so that, uh, a lot of those goals could be accomplished in a more effective. Manner and bring the code to more match that, uh, for the existing EDUs. Uh, that's it, thank you.
Other public comment before moving. Like this would be appropriate following next. And, uh, yes, we would be interested in trying to work with our. So we have two sons and both of them now live, but. Uh, pursue the opportunity potentially for them to come and live on the CDU. Um, we're on the east side of town, we have a lot of sufficient size to support the CDU, actually to support. Quite a bit more square footage than, uh, than, uh, CDU would allow at this point. I do know ten definitions in your vision plan that. There's also a definition of an employee dwelling unit. Uh, in their definitions, and it allows fifteen hundred square. So I, I see a little inconsistency between the current code, which only allows the thousand. And the employee one which allows fifteen hundred, so. Just thought that this might be an early opportunity to encourage. You all to be able to think about whether that would be compatible. With, um, your visions of trying to encourage, uh, keeping the community alive, bringing back the native. Uh, and his family. They had a home with upbringing here. The second element of this that applies in the current code is that. CDUs are required to be attached to the main dwelling unit. At least as I read it online, sometimes, uh, I, I've heard both, but anyway, so. In, in our particular situation, it would. Um, require us to mass the main building way more than if they were not requiring to be detached. We've got a lot of areas where we should make as much of a low profile. So that, this, that's our, we're just interested in taking the opportunity. Early in the process to see if you all would consider the tip of. That it would, uh, fit the vision for the future and. See if we can, we, we are in the urban growth boundary on the east side of town in the suburb. Um, I think we would generally get most of the goals that you're pursuing. Uh, which your plan also does include, you know, supporting community outcomes. I think that's, that's in my comments, I don't know.
I have, uh, two, two small comments. Um, I'm gonna start with, uh, Bravo for the work on his manifesto, it's brilliant. And, uh, we're aligned with so many goals. We started out with a lot of your goals, we have. The cows, we have a small house, we don't water our whole yard, lots of lots of same vision. Uh, I just wanna point out two, two areas of interest. Particularly that I think you're on the right path, that's your tiering system. It's pretty, uh, important for small builders and your streamlined, um. What, how do you call it? The streamlined process of getting your permits, etc., it could be simplified. And, and maybe you, I think you referenced the square footage where it might bump into another. Level of permit process, but to help us without having to hire all the professionals and, um. Make it possible for us to provide a vision. We're just not as comfortable. But it's a piece of armor, it's all.
Great, thank you very much. Any more, uh, any other public comment before we, we begin with a workshop?
Um, my name is Melanie Buckles, I'm, um, uh, here as a work representative. For the frying pan caucus area, but I want to make this public comment, um, as an individual. Um, and that is just, I want to make sure that zoning is aware, um. That I have actually tried to bring this issue to the forefront for several months and I haven't gotten anywhere, so I just wanna make sure that you're aware. I believe that I have identified an error in both the land use code. And on the mapping of our caucus area in the caucus overlay. Um, and in an ordinance that was meant to reduce or decrease the maximum allowable square footage. Uh, for all of Picken County, um, it, it, we were not mentioned in the body of that ordinance. Um, but the CGMAC and their recommendation was to reduce it to nine thousand and I can't remember the number. Got my glasses, um, except for where it's more restrictive. The frying pan valley has had a maximum allowable, uh, floor area of five thousand seven hundred and fifty feet. And the final maximum, including all GQMSs and TDRs. When the land use code was rewritten, uh, they took out. The GMQS and TDR cap for our, um, caucus area. As it's written in the land use code today, I want to believe that this is an error. However, I think it's important to address because removing those caps. Um, does expand our area. Um, and we need clarification, if it wasn't an error, we need to know. Um, especially on this map, this is a perfect example. But it's designated now on the overlay that the frying pan area is about a quarter. Uh, a mile off of the frying pan road when previously. The frying pan area was, I don't know, maybe ninety percent larger than what it is, so it would also apply to this. What's now on the map is rural and remote, our square footage, uh, cap should apply to that, anyway. We don't have to go into it altogether, I just wanted to make sure that zoning is aware of it. Because the errors appear to have occurred in chapter three, which is zoning of the land use code and on the map.
Thank you very much. Alright. Um, if there's no other further public comment, see if we're gonna. Jump into the joint planning and zoning Vision 2050 work group.
Zach, thank you so much. Um, we'll, we'll, uh, take the helmet and I do wanna acknowledge that this is the, the first meeting of. TMZ with the Vision 2050 work group, so, uh, we appreciate the, the time tonight and, and the community interest. This meeting was called to announce the draft Vision 2050 comprehensive plan, so this is a. A draft plan that is many years in the making and a lot of community outreach has been done to get to this point. Um, even if you didn't have a public comment tonight, this is the beginning of more community engagement, so there will be. Many other opportunities to engage and we appreciate everybody being here tonight, so we've got a very full agenda. Given, um, what we're announcing here tonight, so purpose of the meeting is to, to bring the PNC and the work group together. To really get alignment on how we got here, what the process was today. But the bulk of our meeting is gonna be reserved for reviewing what's in the graph comprehensive plan. What policies are foundational and a continuation of what's in the county land use plan right now. Where are some policy elements that may be new to the comp plan, but certainly aren't new to the county? And then the other end of that continuum are new policies that are designed to help manage some of that intensity that the work group. Has been, been working through for, um, many years now, so the, um. Final part of our agenda is to preview that community engagement process that, that I had mentioned, this is. A draft plan and just the beginning of that, so. Um, what we'd like to do, because this is that first meeting that we've done jointly with PNC. Is really quickly, um, go around do some introductions for our work group and PNC members and we'll keep it very quick. Name, any affiliation, you know, if you're a Vision 2050 work agenda member, the community growth advisory committee that led to the work group. A caucus rep, whatever your affiliation is, and then, um, we've got a list of chapters here from the comp plan. We just really quickly like to know what chapter you're most, um, interested in, so. I'll start and, and I'll bottle it. And that my name is Miles Graham, I'm facilitating this work group process since, um, August of twenty twenty-two. And I am most interested in all of these chapters because I, I'm not one of the big favorites. I will throw it over to you.
It's good, um, Suzanne Wolf, Community Development Director. Um, so I've been going to lots of meetings, I guess, on this, and I'll go with Miles that I probably can't really pick what. One of my favorite chapters, but, um, I've spent a lot of time in the built environment, one obviously being, uh.
Mavis Fitzgerald, I'm part of the consultant team, I work with Miles and everyone, um, I'm, I'm going, I'm excited about.
Everyone, um, Riley Tenon's also with the consultant team, um. I don't know, I feel like if I'm gonna break them all and not have all my chapters. I really love the historic spread that you guys pulled together. And kind of the background of history of Picken County, so really appreciated.
Well, I'm Michael Miracle, I was part of the Citizens Growth Advisory Committee, um. And I am also part of the Transportation Coalition for the Twenty First Century. And I would say I'm most interested in. A combination of the transportation intensity study wherever it lives in there and also the, the economic intensity. Sure, what, or, or look at what's happening today.
Okay, so I'm Ellen Sisano and I'm the Long Range Planning Manager. And since I was very involved in all of these chapters, um, I'd have to say that if you're a data geek. Existing conditions chapter is you, there's a lot of data in there that's pretty fascinating. Um, but, yeah, I think all of the chapters are, are great, so, um, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
And this Max Phyllis, I was a member of the CGAC and also on the Vision 2050. Um, I definitely think every single one of these is near and dear to me, so I'm not gonna pick and I. I like the way they all intermingle and work together and that's also the challenges that we've seen the last seven years.
My name's Zach Matthews, I'm on the Planning and Zoning Board and the, uh, chapter that I'm most interested in is the, uh, implementation.
Uh, Joe Craybott, Advice to our PNC Implementation Plan, which I didn't see in. Also interested in making this, uh, ten pages rather than a hundred.
Save with the code.
Um, Randy Gold, I was part of the, uh, Growth Committee Advisory and part of the Vision. Uh, twenty fifty group, um. The document you guys put together is really pretty impressive, I mean, it was, it was pretty, uh. Interesting working through it today, I don't know that I grasped everything that was in it. Um, I'm probably more interested in a built environment because I deal with that professionally. Um, but it's all, the interrelation between segments is all, uh, is all really fascinating and well considered, so.
Uh, Joe Wells, Growth Committee and Vision 150 Committee, um. When I finally got around to looking at this stuff yesterday, I was a little shocked by the, uh. Stack of documents, so, um, I have to admit, I've looked at the appendices, but I haven't. Weighed it in with the master plan yet, so I can't really tell you what my favorite chapter is.
Fair enough, yeah, there's, there's a lot to it, so.
I think you just said your appendices, but the appendices are my favorite part. Uh, my name is Melanie Buckles, I'm the area representative for the frying pan valley caucus. Say I probably was interested in the natural environment and then also the implementation plan part of it, so.
Hi, uh, sorry I was late, I'm Chelsea Clark, I'm on. Uh, and I was also planning a naming board pointy for the. Uh, so I attended these meetings virtually. Um, and listening and it was all very interesting, well-run, um, and. I didn't pick a segment of the package that I was most interested in, I think it's. County should look at itself as an island or very connected to our neighbors.
Sir, I was part of the Growth Committee on the PNC, now I was very impressed by this document, um. The existing conditions, information was really interesting, I thought. Interested in the natural environment, the goal is our make the implementation of this.
My name's Alan Jones, I'm the representative of Woody Creek, the Twenty Fifty Committee. Uh, and I think I'm interested in the, in the built environments and the natural environment and obviously the implementation.
Awesome, Alan, thank you so much, I think what we're hearing is it's all interconnected, I wanna go to our, our folks. Online and, um, Brian Hannigan was a Community Growth Advisory Committee member, now work group member who I see as an attendee, and Brian, if you can hear us, we're. Sending you an invite to promote you to a panelist and then I also want to, um, give. Joe and then Marcella a chance to introduce themselves, so Joe, why don't you go first?
So, Joe Mason, I'm on Planning and Zoning, um. Uh, I wasn't so much, uh, I'm interested in the entire, uh, document. Where I, I found things that I think might need to be addressed are primarily built environment and natural environment. Uh, then a few things that I don't think have been assigned, but, uh, I think we'll get to those eventually.
We will, thanks Joe and Marcella.
Okay, hi, hi, everybody, uh, so. Was on Planning and Zoning for a bazillion years, uh, including, uh, the now defunct. Uh, uh, Long Range Planning, uh, Committee. Now I am, um, uh, representing, uh, Moon Creek Caucus, uh, so hello to you all, uh. For me, I, I think, um, I'm interested in implementation. Comprehensive plans don't matter if they're not implemented and. I, I'm also interested in a future land use map, which is best practices. Uh, I, I see some indication that that might happen here, so I'm excited about that.
Thank you, Marcel and Brian.
Afternoon, everybody, Brian Hannigan at Holy Cross Energy CGAC and Vision 2050, also participating in the Eagle County Land Use Reform Process. So, very interested in the regional approach and to the extent that we can, um, look at. Uh, development and growth objectives on a regional scale and obviously implementation, um, as. Everything from the natural to the built environments, to the community measures of success, to what's going on in the region. All directly affects energy production and consumption and. That's the business that we're in, is helping to make that more sustainable and as you've probably read elsewhere, we're doing our part. And would love to see our communities do theirs, so. In good shape.
Excellent, thank you, Brian, and, and thanks.
And, and by the way, side note, side note, uh, we've been involved in this process so long that my eyesight is degraded to the point where I now need glasses, so. Kara, this one's for you.
It is indeed, it's been a long process and, and exciting while.
Silver Nango, deputy county manager, been in all the caucus pieces, um, and excited to see this come to fruition. All climate chapter, I'm really excited, um, I think the implementation plan, we've been talking through the policies, so we're. To me, it feels like we're getting to that next step, so to have the eye on the horizon of implementation moving forward is pretty exciting. And thank you for everyone for being here and all the work that you put in to give us here too, this is. Uh, we did a retreat with the board today that really I think was a good reflection of. The years of work, so many of you, but then your processes through the CGAC, through PNC. Um, so it's exciting to be at this point today.
And we do have a lot to cover tonight, so we're gonna jump right into it with some of the background. PNC and the work group has, has done a lot of work, so this is very familiar to you all, so we're gonna go quickly through the background. Knowing we did spend a lot of time with this, as Tara mentioned, I'm with the BOCC earlier today. And that background and history will be an important part of what's brought forth in the community outreach to follow. Uh, but we would be remiss not to start this conversation rooted in our values. Those of you who have been here from the beginning or following along know. This has been a values-driven and data-informed process and continues to be so. Um, and the vision statement that started with the BOCC and really evolved with the work of the community. Advised, Growth Advisory Committee was implementing bold climate action while balancing our economy. Preserving our rural and wild lands and supporting an equitable and affordable community, and that's rooted in our climate. Our economic, our rural preservation and our equity and affordability goals. Um, the, the pathway to Vision 2050 really began in twenty nineteen when the, the BOCC declared a climate emergency. In twenty twenty-two, almost three years ago, the BOCC appointed twenty-six members to that Community Growth Advisory Committee. That worked for eighteen months to come up with their comprehensive report that was adopted by the BOCC. And has been the basis for a lot of the work that's been doing as we were implementing that. That suite of recommendations into the comp plan, we brought in caucus representatives and caucus master plans to inform the development. Of this draft comprehensive plan, which really began the Vision 2050 project. Uh, the technical analysis to support the values and inform us with data, um, really. Brought forward some very unique intensity studies that, that you all have seen and really validated a lot of the work that. The caucus master plans have done, but the community growth advisory committee has done, which brought us to where we are today and releasing the draft comprehensive plan. From here, we will look at code development and code adoption as follow-ups from, from the, the plan. And with that, I'll flip it to, to them or Alan to.
I think I guess this one. Um, so yeah, I mean, I think this timeline, you've all been in, in the middle of all of this, it reflects a lot of the meetings we've had with the PNC. And the work group, we've been trying to go back and forth because. We want the work group to help inform staff's work that we're bringing to the PNC as the PNC works through. Um, basically creating the, the, the comp plan and taking it through that adoption process. So at this point, we're at the launching of the comp plan. Um, where we're starting now the community outreach on the actual draft of the comp plan. Um, and, you know, going back to various agencies or the caucuses or all of those, bringing all those people in. To make sure that everybody has an opportunity to review their comp plan and give us their feedback as we go towards finalizing that. We will, in that process, be working with the PNC September, October, basically having work sessions. Um, to work through, you know, the specifics in the comp plan, whether it's chapter by chapter or some other variation on that. Um, to really go through that, we'll bring in the community engagement to that to create a final plan that will then go to the PNC. Um, informal public hearings for adoption, so we're looking at this point at late fall. We keep sort of, we, we've gone back, we've gone to talking about fall, winter, as opposed to really trying to put months to things, but. We wanna give it obviously the time it, it takes, and so right now we've set up four work sessions with the PNC that takes us to the beginning of November. Um, at which point then we would look to be seeing when we schedule those public hearings. Um, once the PNC is adopted, there is a step with the BOCC to approve the comp plan, so again, that will be. You know, one more step in the process, but that's where we're at today. I get to keep going, I think I went through some of that roles and responsibilities, I think, um. I, I think maybe the only piece there again, we're, you know, working with PNC on the adoption. Everything, once we've adopted the comp plan, the BOCC has approved. Then we move into the next step of this, there's an implementation plan, part of that implementation is gonna be. Amending the land use code and, you know, what that's gonna look like, amending the building and energy codes. So that will all be a next piece that we're bringing back through public hearing processes and, um, full public, public process.
And I'll just say for the, the work group, as PNC serves to do the deep dive into the, the comp plan itself. For the work group, this is your plan and hopefully you see your fingerprints all over it. So as we go out to the community, that's where the role of the work group will evolve a little bit to really be liaisons to that community. And help make sure that, that your constituents, your friends and neighbors are aware of the comp plan and, and supporting that, that outreach is. Is how the work group will, will really focus in the coming months.
And then if I may to follow up, once the comprehensive plan is adopted. The workforce will come back into the mix, hopefully to help as we, um. Implement land use code and energy code amendments to implement the, the comprehensive plan, so we're hoping that you will. Reengage at that point, um, and be a part of that process.
Thanks, Alan. Before we switch gears from process into some of the intensity analysis, any, any questions on, on process for the, the team? We'll have plenty of time for discussion later too, so just a quick check in, because that was, that was a lot on process. And with that, I'll hand over to Kara to highlight, um, some of the analysis we've been doing in that value-driven data book process.
Um, so we wanted to bring back the intensity study white paper, we shared this with the work group and PNC in. May, June, I can't remember, um, and it was drafted at that point and so we're excited that we were able to finalize. You should all, in the appendices that Joe got, um. But we have the white paper and those, those final intensity studies and so really, you know. Where did this come from and just why, why is this so critical as we look at the comp plan and is. Carrying forward to the, um, recommendations out of the CGAC was really saying. We all, I think, around the room have anecdotes about what is happening in the county and we start to look at what are the transportation impacts? What are the economic impacts? And what are the climate impacts of kind of our, our growth patterns that we've had in the county, specifically really looking at those large towns? And saying what the growth committee said is before you go and adopt any actual policies or code. Put some data around it, try and quantify, is our assumptions real and I. It, I'm glad and excited to share that, yeah, we found some data and this is really some formative work because. Traditional kind of data sources don't always tell the story of what's happening in the upper valley. And so the way that we came across this with our consultant teams and this was a mix of engineering consultants, transportation, economic. consultants and climate um experts in the field to help us come up with, how do we create um some proxies for the data that we're looking for to ground true what we're seeing and feeling within Pickin County? And so walking into these, I want to remind everyone, these are not to be statistically valid or anything. Um, you know, to that level that this is really trying to put some data around. What is the anecdotes that we have been hearing in the community? Um, so again, the overall takeaway is is that the intensity in Pickin County is is real and it's a quantifiable phenomenon distinct from and that large homes do have a disproportionate impact on a lot of the goals that we have set as a community. They do have a disproportionate impact on economic transportation and climate intensity. And again, this is kind of coming out of those bad hypothesis, I shouldn't even call it a hypothesis, but really some of the assumptions out of the growth committee that talked about the large homes and unincorporated Pickin County are really contributing to this privatized economy, this re- being termed as residential economy. And so that is taking away from a lot of the other goals and values we have as a community. And how does that show up? And so we are seeing that large homes defined as above 5750 is the definition. Um, is where we're seeing that disproportionate impact. And I'll go through each one of the studies. Um, and that the occupancy, construction, redevelopment and activity services of homes over 5750 is driving activity and intensity in the rural areas and is misaligned with the current infrastructure that as a community, we've really invested in the community services and rural character. So again, I'm kind of thinking back to the that's happening in these rural areas is outside of the transit system, really the affordable housing system, the grocery store services that we have set up within the urban areas. And what is that impact on our rural character? So jumping in, we did three different studies, the economic, transportation and climate. So I'll jump to economic and I'm gonna go high level because a lot of you have seen this. Um, and you know, so no- nothing has really changed since you saw it last time, just we were able to finalize all the backend data behind it. But you're gonna hear this often, but large homes do have a disproportionate impact on job generation. They make up 14% of single-family homes in unincorporated Pickin County, but they generate more jobs than the remaining 86% of homes in Pickin County. And so again, that's speaking to how how is are we having this residential economy that it is playing out in a few different ways? And that construction jobs are moving down valley, but jobs generated by larger homes have declined since 2010 by 16%. But that, but they've increased in Eagle and Garthville County. But what we're actually seeing is that those firms are moving outside of Pickin County. So when you're looking at regular data, it looks like construction jobs have moved out of the county. But the activity, the job site activity is still happening in Pickin County, just the reporting of where that's happening. Not to also diminish, we're seeing increased activity in Garthville and Eagle County as well. But so as we start to think about, you know, and the impact of that is that if the firms are down valley, then the people are likely working down valley. And I think we'll jump into transportation. So that means longer trips, more transportation impacts that are happening um as kind of a compounding factor here. So jumping into the key takeaways for the transportation is that um, uh, that what we found is that employee trips grow considerably as home size increases. So I think this graph is kind of hard to see um and hopefully you've all seen it before. But while resident trips don't dramatically increase, so what we did is we we looked at what are the types of trips by house size that happened? And so there's really three kinds of trips. There's the trips that we all take day to day to go to work, so two in front work. And then they, and so those are, I'm not gonna remember the title right now, but those are, you know, for those, those are the typical that happen from the house. And there's also the extracurricular trips, right? That's going to the grocery store, dropping them off at school, going to a friend's house that are common occurrences. We see across all households, we see it across the nation. Those stay relatively flat by house size. But what we start to see is that the services that are demanded and those service-related trips grow quite a bit as house size increases. So it's really minimal. It's about one, 1.2 of those service-related trips for houses 5750 and below. They they generate and go up to about 4.5 trips a day for those houses that are getting into the above 9250 and above or 8750 and above. And so what that means is that we're really starting to see that the largest homes generate nearly 10 times more employee trips than smaller homes. And so that starts to be a cumulative impact on our transportation intensity across the county. Um, additionally, those, what we found is that those daily trips of the service-related related trips are also much longer, not surprisingly. Um, so large homes represent close to 15% of the housing stock, but they account for 20% of all residential trips and 25% of all residential VMTs. So not to get caught in the percentages, but big takeaway here is that again, they are disproportionately impacting our daily trips and the VMTs. We're seeing longer distances, longer time on the road, which has impact to our greenhouse gases, but also um to our community as a whole. And so the last intensity study that we did is that we looked at the climate intensity. And for some of you that were on the um growth committee, we had done, or I think even PMZ has seen this in the past. We had done an analysis in 2017 that looked at electricity and natural gas usage related to house size. Um, and we updated that study for this process. We had over 15,000 data points of like post-meter, what's happening with electricity bills and natural gas. Um, so thank you to Brian and Holy Cross and and Black Hills that provided us that information, which was critical. But what we're seeing is large homes also have a disproportionate impact on building emissions. So in unincorporated Pickin County, again, they um 26% of all housing units, um, almost 45% of all building emissions. And that is to speak to as as square footage is increasing. Um, going to this next bullet point, energy uses for the largest homes. Try and let this simmer for a little bit for everyone to understand that. But for the largest homes is 41 times greater than a thousand square foot home. Um, and really that is starting to get into a lot of the amenity loads, the complexity of systems, the additional belts and muscles that come as those ones get larger. For reference, then a 10,000 square foot home is 26 times more energy than that thousand square foot. Um, and you know, again, that these have the largest impact, but being able to look at home size or how we start to think about what levers there are um related to external energy and internal energy might be some policies that we can think about to meet our commitment mission goals. So I'm gonna pause. That was a lot. Um, hopefully that was just a summary and nothing new other than seeing the numbers again. But any comments, discussion, questions? Stimmering thoughts?
Well, you'll see the the nexus of some of this intensity reflected in some of the the draft policies as we get into the draft comprehensive plan review. This is the portion of the agenda tonight where we want to have the most discussion, understand where where you see opportunities, where you see challenges, what you think the broader community should know about this plan. So as we we dive into it, we've looked at the table of contents, but Ellen's gonna take us through a little more detail on what a few of those chapters include.
Yeah, we're gonna dive into policies, but just so you understand, everything that's contained within the plan. Uh, there's a chap, the introduction chapter uh introduces the vision and values for the community, looking at uh the histor- the history and culture of the county, right? The second chapter uh includes existing conditions, looking at a community profile and um providing a baseline for where we are today. The next four chapters uh are the chapters uh that that include policies relating to the natural environment, the built environment, community and economic health and regional approach. You'll see chapter seven uh includes, is the implementation plan, which is not in the draft that you've looked at today. But we heard you and we are going to be working with the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh making recommendations for implementation as we go through the draft plan uh and anticipating it actually uh adopting the implementation as part of the comprehensive plan adoption concurrent with that adoption. And then finally, chapter eight uh will be the appendix. And as Joe knows, that is, that includes the water conditions report and several of the data intensity and data reports that um have been developed as part of the plan. So that's, that's what's there. Um, and I think most of you will recognize this graphic. We presented it in May or June. Basically, uh, it it's looking at the land use pattern uh patterns in the county. And we're looking at it recognizing that intensity that's historically occurred in the urban areas of the county. Uh, now takes place in the rural areas too, based on the large homes and functioning as uh as economic hubs and other um and other aspects of of development that's occurring in rural areas today. And so we were faced with the challenge of, okay, so how do we manage intensity in areas other than the urban areas that have the existing infrastructure or services to accommodate development? And when we presented this to you, we identified different areas within the land use pattern in the county, the low rural transition, semi-urban, urban resort recreation. And you said, um, could you define those areas for us? And so we're not gonna go into detail here today, but we did actually define those areas, came up with the characteristics associated with them, um, including density, the availability of infrastructure and proximity to natural environment. So just wanted to say, yes, we've responded to your input there um and and provided um provided that tho- those descriptions and they they will be included in the link.
Ellen, we had a question online about um just informing you what a future land use plan is. How do we define that?
Two. We are, we are not anticipating having the classic future land use map that you may have seen in previous master plans over the years. Uh, we do anticipate uh having something perhaps along the lines of this graphic that will identify uh appropriate uses um or characteristics associated with areas within the plan. And so to be determined, yes, we anticipate having something that speaks to future land use, but it, we don't anticipate it being a classic future land use map that goes parcel by parcel uh and identifies potential uses for the future. Um, yeah, so we're still working on exactly what that will look like, but we anticipate having something along those lines.
Excellent. Thank you, Ellen. And so this is a quick recap and and you all have seen this before, but the the overarching goals on natural environment, on community health, built environment and regional approach. As the Community Group Advisory Committee worked through all of these these values and found that there are gonna be inherent trade-offs as we work through implementation of a vision. And so we're not gonna read all of these, but these are our North Star that the growth committee and the work group has been working through on some of the the tensions that exist. When you have some of those ideas, you're gonna have inherent tensions, whether it's affordable housing and how development of that, as the growth committee called it, the growth we do want, you know, intersects with intensity and managing growth and preservation of rural character, balancing the economy with rural preservation and quality of life. Um, a big one on equity and affordability, how does that intersect with bold climate action and some of the performance standards that um are in the the draft plan? And finding the the right balance to house size and energy code with rural preservation, economic health and quality of life. So um, so that is really what the implementation of this draft plan is, is trying to find that balance of where do we find the the Goldilocks zone and the sweet spot in balancing these intensities with these values and the inevitable trade-offs that that you're gonna see as we get into the policy framework? So with that, um, you can see, um, we've got maybe a little bit of this slide cut off, but what you're gonna see in the the policy framework is we'll start with some of those foundation foundational policies that on the continuum are on one side of, these are continued policies that the the county land use code already has. And then we're gonna take a look at some of the the policies that may be new to the comp plan but are not new to Pickin County. And then we're gonna work into some of those strategies for managing intensity that are new policy. So that's the the framework that Kara's gonna walk us through.
Sure. And what I would say, I'm sorry, it's cutting off the material for life. Um, what I would say too is the intention of tonight is to give that high-level overview. We can't go through all the policies by any means. For all of you on PMZ, lucky you, we're gonna go through them all over um in September and October. Um, so you will see these, but this is just one way to start to break out, you know. Um, how, how are you, how can we start to parse out what is part of long-held values for the county that are still staying the same? 80% night, you know, what's whatever percentage is really unchanged from prior um master plans from prior comp plan. I think we talked earlier today, some of these may be going back all the way to the green book, so decades old. And just really want to reiterate, a lot of this is not changing and that the foundation of what we have um remains the same. And so what we tried to do is just start to look at what are those policies? And then how do they reflect our updated values, right? And some of these that might be going back to the seventies or eighties are still just as relevant today as we look at the values that we think about for the future. So going to the next slide, um, we just pulled out um a couple of examples of how it was written in the land use, or excuse me, in the comprehensive plan. So you see how these policies are actually written and how they start to take shape within the comprehensive plan. That really guides the future of work. And so some that, again, really calling out from some of the work from the work group and PMZ too is, you know, the land use as reflection of community values, the importance of wildlife and habitat. Areas and then, you know, managing growth, that is still remains foundational in that that comprehensive plan. Um, and then also, you know, there's been a lot of conversations about TDRs and really bring reminding that TDRs are a tool and a program that we want to see and have always wanted to see as that um mechanism for maintaining our rural preservation areas. And next slide, and then some other ones are community housing. Still saying true that the focus of development first and foremost remains within the urban growth boundaries, preserving existing community housing. We want to preserve the stock we have. And that development really should be sharing the burden of um impacts to the community. So whatever mechanisms it may be, but that they make or pay an equitable share, measure it with its impacts within to um ensure that we are maintaining our quality of life and our values for the community.
And I just want to put a finer point on the the community housing piece, because as we get into some of those newer policies and we look at housing, uh, we want to make sure that that we all recall the the first piece here, that the focus on the development of new urban or suburban density um should be within the urban growth boundary. So we want to make sure that 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 doesn't get lost as a foundational policy. as we transition into some of the new policies.
So how's there any? Again, this is not covering every policy in the comp plan, but does that conceptually resonate with all of you that this is still reflective of our values, about the community values that we've been set forth of so much that is still being brought forward?
And I did see in the chat that, that Marcela, you should be able to unmute if you, you would like to make a comment. You can hear us. Okay. And
Already made a comment, um, so please just read it.
Well, there will, we always keep the, the record of chats and that Ellen, thank you for explaining that on the land use, future land use plan and map with the, the basis of the comments. So with these foundational statements, let's transition into the, the new.
And so, so, so may I interrupt you? So, so Maroon Caucus is definitely not in sync with us.
And Marcela, just so we can hear you in the room, did you say Maroon Caucus is not in sync with this? Is that just to make sure?
Yes, yes, because, because you haven't, you know, you haven't done the responsible planning around a future of land use map, all those things.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comment and we'd be happy to have some more additional discussion with you on, on that. I, yeah, so, so we'll.
Yeah. And, and you know, you, you actually know that we've down zoned ourselves, right?
Yes, yep, yep. We do.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Um, continue.
Yeah, thanks for your comment. And the, the development of this comprehensive plan, we should say, you know, follows all of the, the best practices and planning required by state statute. And, and that's something that the planning team is very focused on. So with that, let's.
So, 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 excuse me. Um, so you don't have a future land use map. So that is actually best practices. Do, do you like dispute that?
So Marcela, I think it'd be best to have a conversation, but we are not at this time moving forward with a future land use map. And it is not required by state statute in our comprehensive plan. And we are working, Ellen said, and based on kind of feedback from this group of working on a mapping exercise and having a map included within a comprehensive plan that's reflective of some of the concepts within a land use map. But it is not probably by definition where you're thinking of a future land use map. And happy to have an offline conversation too and talk more.
Well, I'm happy to do that as well, but, but I would like your online people, especially PNC, to actually understand that's unusual, right? Um, very unusual. So thank you and continue.
Melanie.
I just, I, I'm just remembering our last meeting and there was a lot of comments about having an actual map. Um, and so it sounded like maybe, I don't know, were you saying that there was going to be one? Or what the, I just want to echo that this wasn't, I think multiple people were asking to see a map.
Yeah, I, just to clarify, I, we are not anticipating creating what has traditionally been a future land use map, which would look parcel by parcel, look at parcel by parcel for the entire county to determine appropriate future land use. So I know for a fact that we're not, we're not going to go with that traditional future land use map model. Um, we, we anticipate doing some sort of map that addresses, we're just, we haven't, we haven't tied down how it's going to be created, but we do anticipate doing some sort of mapping that would be associated with the plan. We just haven't, it's not going to be the traditional future land use map that I think Marcela is referring to, because the county, the county is too big to to realistically go with that traditional approach to future land use map. But so Marcela, we do anticipate doing a map of some sort. It may be a character map. Not sure what that looks like yet, but as we get further in the process, we'll, we'll provide more definition as to what that's going to entail.
I would just also add, sorry, just that we also with many of the caucus areas have a future land use map associated with their caucus area plan.
Right.
So again, I think that's a piece of it. There's, there are a lot of places that sort of have that future land use map component of those master plans, which are all a component of this comprehensive plan. So again, I think the mapping exercise or whatever that might look like is, may look different than that future land use map. But I think we're, we're, you know, incorporating those recommendations out of the master plans, some of which are shown on a map, some of which may be on a different type of map or a different graphic.
Well, Suzanne was going to say that, you know, if you look at the overlay map or the caucus areas, then you can look at, you know, whatever those land use code is surrounding that. And you can have a good idea of what can be done where. But I will reiterate at this point that for on behalf of my caucus, the math is wrong. If that's what we're going to look at and, or at least it's changed. So I, I would want to make sure to get that worked out for, for my caucus area, because it's, it seems reasonable that you can look at those different caucus areas and figure out what can be allowed and not allowed without going parcel by parcel.
We're not anticipating a lot of changes to zoning, a lot of changes to zoning, which future land use maps often lead to and direct. Um, so again, I think we'll take a different approach to identifying characteristics of certain areas to the extent that that is appropriate and applicable. But yeah, it's not going to be that. And we do, as Suzanne has alluded to, we still have those geographic specific future land use maps for the caucus areas and those will still be in play. Um, those are on a much different scale than the entire county scale. And I just.
So I'm going to say one last thing. Uh, so for our caucus area, which is, is obviously like very small, uh, Moon Creek Caucus, you, you don't have a future land use map for us. You don't have it. Um, it wasn't adopted as part of our plan. Um, so, so please, like this is basic land use planning. Please help us.
Thank you. Yeah, we hear you.
Uh, yeah, just as far as Woody Creek goes, we would, we've heard rumors that the urban growth boundary is going to be changed. And we would really like to know if this. Uh, and that's like, and the, the other thing is we would like to know whether we're going to be labeled in some way as part of a transition zone that will enable higher density housing throughout Woody Creek. We, we really want those questions answered.
So, and we'll go through some of them. So I maybe to come back, I think Melanie and what we've heard from the group last time on the mapping discussions. So there is not a map in the draft that you have today, based on what we heard last time, that we do need to do a mapping exercise, as I think building on some of yours. Um, we don't, we have not given, we don't know what that shred is going to look like. Is it around the definitions of urban and somewhere urban? We don't know, but what we did here is we are going to be having some kind of open house engagement process later in August. And we'll get through that of where we're going to bring that mapping discussion, both to this group and as part of a broader community engagement. So that will be as part of we, as what we'll get to at the end, part of the community engagement as we're working to this final draft, it will be part of that process. Um, and to your point, so as of right now, there is no proposed policy of changing our urban growth boundary, our urban growth boundary. I think we talked about it with the growth community was there's a lot of other impacts outside of the housing piece of the way code is written related to the urban growth boundary and that. So that is not part of the discussion.
Okay, so, so may I ask a specific question? Are, are you proposing in any way outside of the urban growth boundary to rezone or re-characterize any lands like in my caucus area, Moon Creek Caucus? Um, for upzoning?
We don't have any specific recommendations in the draft plan at the moment that indicate an upzoning in any specific area.
And Marcela, I think it would be helpful to you to walk through what some of the proposed changes in policy are, um, so that we don't put the cart before the, the horse here.
So you, you may assume that I've read everything you've written. Uh, so, okay, so, so, you know, just please represent that you're not uh, going to propose upzoning in the Moon Creek Caucus area. And then I can get back to my group and represent them. Thank you.
Well, and I will just add that when I look at the overlay map, that's exactly what's happened in our frying pan caucus area. We went from all property in all land in our caucus area uh, as being final maximum, including TDRs and GMQSs at 5750. But I look at the overlay map and I looked at some of these maps and it says now it's rural remote and it's 9,750. Is that the correct number?
So Melanie, I guess that we need to follow up on what the, what the error is. There is no intention that there's any change to the 5750 residential Florida cap in the, in the frying pan.
Well, there's, there, I mean, I wouldn't think that there would be, but the language has changed. And actually there was an application that was just approved by the B O C C that actually gave them the GMQSs that they weren't entitled to because of the errors in the land use code. So it's, 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 yeah. Yeah, I just want to make sure if we're talking about maps and up, upzoning, it really feels like we've been upzoned.
That definitely isn't the intention of what the action level is taking with the overlay. So if, you know, we'll have to see if there's a, something that needs to get cleaned up. But I haven't seen where, where the error may be.
Yeah, go ahead, Jen, Zach.
Oh, so I would, I think that the part of the concern in the Woody Creek Caucus area derives around the Phillips Trail part and the expansion there and how that expansion would take place without, um, you know, extending the urban growth boundary or doing some sort of rezoning or, or whatever. So I think that that's a big concern. You know, personally, I'm not in favor. That's kind of a red line for me of extending the urban growth boundary any, any further than where it is right now.
And I think we'll get to talking again, there isn't an intention to change the urban growth boundary. There is a discussion about is there potential for some housing someplace outside of the urban growth boundary? So that's, I think, if you let us get to the point where we'll show you the, the draft language behind that, which is a policy that's obviously up for discussion. Um, but that, none of that is a change to the actual line of the urban growth boundary.
Zach, did you have a?
Uh, I'd just like to maybe echo what staff mentioned at the beginning that this is the very beginning of a very long process where there'll be community input all along the way. And that the goal of this workshop today and the goal of a lot, a lot of these workshops in the future are to start looking at some of these things from 30,000 feet and then find out what the particular issues are and drill into them maybe a little further down the line. That's it.
That is exactly right. Yeah, Max.
Is my assumption correct? But sure, in your guys' book, that would be great if we easily could detail a map parcel by parcel and easily identify it, because let's face it, if they weren't, it's going to lead for more trouble for you down the road, right? But I'm assuming that the reason we don't do that is the time that it would take to do that correctly would really slow down the process of everything being implemented in a comprehensive plan. And comprehensive plan is really supposed to be at that 10,000 feet. Or is there something I'm missing and there more of a reason why we wouldn't do that?
Um, may I speak?
Um, let's, Marcela, let's, uh, let Max's question be answered first and then you're more than welcome to speak. So Steph, I don't know, um, your response to that.
I was just going to say that, as I said earlier, Suzanne reiterated, at a caucus area, geographic caucus area of scale, yeah, parcel by parcel makes sense. At the scale of the entire county, which is, I don't remember how many, how many.
15,000, right.
Right. It, large area, it really makes more sense to look at um, a broader scale in terms of, yeah, are there character zones that are appropriate for certain uses? Don't know what it's going to look like, but at that scale, doing parcel by parcel, yes, it would take a long time. But it's really, um, it, it just, it's more detailed than, um, I think is appropriate and makes sense for that, this, the scale of the entire county. When we have those caucus, where there are existing caucus area, um, future land use maps. So look at the detail, there's some areas of the county where we might want to have some detail, like along the highway, just above the soul, right? But for the most part, we just really want to be, I think, looking at the, at a broader, broader characteristics based on, uh, issues that we determined to be really relevant to the policies that we're establishing. So I don't know if that helps. But it's the scale, it's just a, it's the scale. It doesn't really, so. Yeah.
And with that too, I think Max, you're right, the, the intent of a comp plan is to be that high level advisory document. And as we looked at the schedule, the code updates to follow are where a lot of the more detailed analysis will take away.
And, and I would also reiterate that often the future land use map uh, indicates the need for changes to zoning, right? And we're really not seeing outside of the caucus area plans so far much in the way of recommendations that would lead to significant changes to zoning. So again, that's typically a, a future land use map as a precursor to changes in zoning. It's not anticipating much of that, if any.
And that's key. And, and I think it's important to, to start to look at, you know, what are some of those potential policies, policy changes? We've looked at the foundational to bring us back on, on time and on agenda. Looking now at this matrix of some of those policies that are new to the comp plan, but certainly not new to PNC.
Sure. So, um, again, these are really bringing in, you know, the prior comp plan was really focused on the built environment, land use in particular, as you know, we're in 2025. There's a lot of other elements that are really important when you think about our community that also are interrelated within that built environment. And also state statute as revised and, you know, state statute is also reflecting that you need to bring in more elements. Um, if we're really talking about a comprehensive plan process. And so these are elements that are all goals within the county through various departments or otherwise. Um, but we are just bringing into the comp plan, again, reiterating the comprehensive plan as an advisory document. Um, so this is not dictating what public health is doing or human services or healthy rivers and streams, but is bringing in those policies. So we can start to see how they interact with the goals of the land use code, um, which ultimately falls within the comprehensive plan. So there's elements related to multimodal transportation and connectivity. You know, there's how we think about managing recreation, um, elements related to healthy rivers and our water, sort resources, our healthy community, um, hazard and resiliency planning. So this comes from our all hazards mitigation plan that we have as a county, as well as economic resiliency and diversity that comes out of our human services realm and our climate action plan, not just like the, how we, the board adopted earlier this year. They can go into, again, these are just those policies and more directly of where they're coming from, whether it be from E M C C, open space, healthy rivers and stream concepts, and then. healthy rivers and stream concepts, and then moving forward. Really bringing in what is exciting to me is bringing in this community and economic aspect of it. Maybe just a pause is when we picked up the growth committee, I think we all talked about what do we want to see in Pickens County in twenty fifty? And what everyone commissioners around the table and PNC members around the table said, first and foremost, it's the best place to live, and I want to make it the best place to live for my kids and grandchildren to be able to come back here. To your point, right? In twenty fifty, and so when we started to talk about that, we start to talk about our goals within the land use code. We also are talking about what we want as a community, and so really starting to bring those aspects. So how do we think about health prevention? That is also just as important. What's the lifelong services that we have as a county to make this a great place for all, all ages? What is that economic resiliency and that diversification that we can bring into the conversation as far as jobs? And and the absence of housing and this, so great to start to see those coming in and being how that all interplays when we look at our interest code.
I think we're back to Marcela's question.
Yes.
So, so are you allowing him to speak? Hi, Joe.
Yeah, certainly, Marcela, and this is a great place to pause for some discussion on these potentially new policies that are drafted in the comp plan. But Marcela, go ahead, please.
Yeah, so hi, Joe, you know me, you know my background. So it is super easy to actually do a future land use map, super easy and responsible. The the notion that the 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 caucuses somehow have these like sub area plans that, you know, have maps is false. We don't have one, Maroon Ca- Caucus does not have one. And you know, I just really, really ask you to do this basic work. It's not hard. It's not hard. And it's responsible. So so unless you want to like provide a recipe for upzoning basically the entire county for, you know, whatever, whatever like character issue that that stuff identifies. Please do the work, do the work. You did it for rural and remote, that stuff matters. Please.
Marcela, I I think what I'm hearing is you want to see a future land use map. And what I would say is we hear that loud and clear, and there will be some mapping exercises that are done during the community outreach phase of the draft plan.
No, excuse me, it's more than that. You haven't done the work and you 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 need to do it now. So you're, you know, you you have these amorphous character guidelines and that could apply anywhere, right? You aren't respecting the the master plans. You you haven't implemented them. You don't have future land use maps associated with those of those, those plans. Our our plan, Maroon Creek Caucus Plan, does not have a future land use map associated with it.
So, just thanks, thanks, Marcela. I you're right, there are some of the caucus area master plans that don't currently have a future land use map associated with them, some do, some don't. So I stand corrected there. Thank you.
And Marcela, we would love again to sit down one on one with you and understand, you know, what what you'd like to see and hear your concerns. We've certainly heard them tonight and acknowledged them. And one of the benefits of this draft comprehensive plan is bringing some uniformity to the caucus plans where there is some inconsistency on the level of detail that that exists in the different caucus areas. And that is why a draft overarching comprehensive plan for the county is being developed. So we would would love to talk with you more offline about about what a future land use map might look like. But
Super. And 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 so, you know, please acknowledge that that's actually best practices.
And whatever of staff tonight is it's not required by state statute. Again, we would love to have more in-depth conversation with you about the planning effort and I think we've absolutely heard your comments tonight.
All right, I'm going to sign off. Thank you.
Thanks, Marcela. So with that, this is the the bulk of of the discussion that we wanted to have tonight around what are some of these policies that are new in county that do directly implement what's in the caucus master plans and what's in the community growth advisory committee recommendations? So you should all see your fingerprints all over this stuff. But this is stuff that that is new policy, that's not foundational, that's not in any current plan. It's some evolutions on on what we have today.
Right. And I know that this is probably really hard to see. So what we tried to do is start to to cluster some of these policies into some bigger, you know, bigger concepts as a way to start to start a gun. And so it's really looking at what are some of the energy policies? So this is really reflective of those bold performance standards and how you're going to see those come through. And then managing the intensity of large homes, managing intensity in our rural areas. And I think that's where you start to see that tiering concept and development standards. Again, this is not the actual code, this is laying the foundation for those code changes to happen and getting the policies as that foundation. And then also elements, what we heard loud and clear is the importance of water. I give credit to the CGAC as they actually requested more water analysis before moving into a comp plan. And the state followed your recommendations and then it was required by state statute. And so also looking at how we bring water reliability and availability, how that some of that starts to inform and shape policies. And then talking about how we talk about looking at policies about housing, community housing outside the U G B as well as following up from those recommendations from the CGAC of just acknowledging that we have a very restrictive code and what are the different tools within the code that we can use to enable more housing, including incentivizing C D U's and E D U's? So to get started, we're going to take it in three chunks. We're going to talk about the energy policy pieces, and we're going to talk about the intensity. You know, talk about, I don't, I think the managing intensity of large homes is how we chunked it together. And then with the housing elements. So with that, we go into the energy elements. And so to walk through these a little bit more in detail. So residential net zero, this is really reflective of the long goals about applying that zero. There have been robust conversations both from C G N C, the work group, as well as even from the board about what is the definition of net zero? What's the goal we're looking for? Climate is still upon us, but threat from climate, and so are we being aggressive enough? And so this is actually laying out more aggressive climate goals. And so, you know, what kind of goals do we want to think about for twenty thirty? How do we talk about net zero? And then also updating our twenty fifty plus per second. The county has a goal of reducing our emissions by twenty fifty by ninety percent from our twenty nineteen. This is actually updating it to a hundred percent emission reduction. The second piece is bringing in the conversation about electrification of the built environment. So we've talked a lot in the past about what are standards and incentives for electrifying our buildings, transportation and infrastructure. But this also is, you know, one part of the discussion. Do we want to have electrification requirements within Pickens County of the residential sector as regulations? Or is it really staying in that standards and incentives? Right now, it really is set up in that tiering structure. So even with the most recent energy code that we adopted, it's that there's incentives, again, low smaller house sizes, there's different standards there versus if you want to go larger, you're really going to have to do more for reducing your energy consumption and trying to be as clean and net zero as possible. Which leads into that last one, which is reducing energy consumption. Again, what are those standards and incentives really on those larger tiers? So beyond that fifty seven fifty that we would want to be thinking about to minimize those emission impacts that were seen from those base studies.
And I I think it's important to call out here too, this was one of those watershed moments for the growth committee on being bold on performance standards to meet our climate action goals. So this is how that recommendation from the CGAC is moving into draft policy.
Questions? Oh, there's more. Okay. There's a lot new. Another one is embodied carbon of the built environment. So we've talked a lot about of, you know, through our greenhouse gas inventory emissions, through the intensity studies, we can see the impact of the built environment. But we also know that the embodied carbon of, you know, where those materials come from, is that a place that we want to be going? The county, this was something that was identified from the growth committee. What I will say is that we are in the process of also doing a case study of how other entities are looking at incentivizing or standards for at least starting to bring the embodied carbon impacts into the fold. Again, I don't think we're really talking into a regulatory, but where are those incentives that we can start looking at? And then lastly, the citing of renewable energy infrastructure. This is really, you know, if we want to be addressing our greenhouse and our climate goals, also, where do we want to look and think about renewable? How can we think about the citing of renewable energy infrastructure in the county? I think said it well, it's probably not going to be all large scale, but can we look at, how can we look at those and thinking about supporting? I'm going to pause there. This again is the policies that start to form the code, but we're hoping that this feels reflective of those bold climate action, those bold performance standards that you all really set the path for. Some of which has already been reflected in energy code, but also going into the next phase that folks had really wanted to see address our climate.
So like Kara said, we can pause here for any comments. What was brought up earlier is all of these are so interconnected that feel free to chime in with any questions or comments. But we'll work through the next couple of policy areas to you in the interest of time. So so please do share your reactions as we as we go into the intensity reduction policies.
So, you know, as we really are rethinking about what is, what is it that we're trying to address today? I think for a long time, the county was focusing on growth, the growth committee, and there's the group, the work group and everyone. I said, hey, intensity is the next thing that we really want to be tackling. So here's the way that the policies are starting to show up. That the land use is really a reflection of its community values that we really want to see smaller scale, less intense residential development in our rural portions of the county. And then how can we look at the incentives to make that happen? Intensity reduction in rural areas, so reduction in traffic and greenhouse gases related to that large scale residential development and distances from the infrastructure and services that they're requiring. And then these next three of ones are really talking about the residential, you know, how to minimize the intensity of residential homes themselves. And so we have reducing the maximum floor area. You know, we've taken the first step from the CGAC, which was the ninety two fifty, which is right now across the county minus where there's more restricted by caucus area. But still need to take that second step, which was eighty seven fifty outside of the U G B. So want to call out that that is unfinished business that we still have to move on. Incentivizing small homes, again, how can we streamline and prioritize land use applications and building permit reviews to really incentivize those smaller homes that we all want to see? And increase the development standards. So as the square footage increases, I think what we've talked about a lot, the intensity studies is it's not just the homes, it's what's happening around the homes. The landscaping areas are bigger and bigger, the gardening areas, the outdoor amenities. And so really making sure that we're addressing the development standards as well as the building itself. And then lastly, how do, how do we look at TDRs as if we're using it and wanting and seeing the value that it still creates for rural preservation? How can we leverage that as a means for reducing future development for future developable floor area? When folks want to go above that fifty seven fifty? Well, no exception. That's what I should say. Okay.
Excellent. So as we get into housing, we wanted to bring a little branding slide. We've talked about housing with work group before we talked about.
I got a group.
Oh, yeah.
Let's take it back up. So my question is on the T R and we're sort of touching on the residential T R and this this new idea. In chapter four, I mean, I think that's sort of the language in the as-built environment. And I'm just wondering whether or not there needs to be a little bit more emphasis on what what that means. There wasn't any sort of definitional context in in T R's are still defined the same way. And so I'm wondering whether or not there really needs to be a little more emphasis or, you know, discussion of the residential T R piece and maybe the change in the unitary measurement. Because that's not really addressed either that I saw. So anyway, I'm throwing that out.
Yeah, I think, Randy, it's a great point, and I think we've been sort of walking that line between like of the, you know, the recommendations from the growth committee, like there's pages related to TDRs. You know, how much of that do we need on the policy level in the comp plan? To then, you know, know that we're still looking to implement those things, but like not calling out, you know, every item individually? Because that may, you know, where where will that lead? So we definitely, there was some, you know, back and forth on that. Are we really dropping in the full detail? Or is it really we're trying to take from that, what are the big policy pieces we're taking from that? I look at Max because I was like, the biggest policy piece there was rural remote's the most important thing, you know? And and you know, that that was really clear. And we want to look at other alternatives for TDRs with the residential TDR, but not trying to sort it out. But to your point, does it need a little bit more to guide us there?
And that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
You know, I I think in our, in our, in CGAC, I mean, we all recognize the importance of the TDR program. And that, you know, the focus is absolutely to preserve, you know, rural land. That said, you know, it it's a totally new concept that I think does warrant, even at the thirty thousand foot level, warrants a little bit more clarification and emphasis because it was such an important part of what we came up with. So.
I would kind of second that. I mean, I get where the difficulty is, you could easily get in the reads on all of these and especially the TDRs. But if I were fresh and just looking at this and knowing the background of what we went through, unless staff's thinking maybe they're going a different direction, I think there probably could be another step of explaining it still on a high level, but maybe with a little more detail. I don't, easy for me to say, I don't know how to word that, but.
And I think we wanted to stay away from drafting code language, right? So there's that happy medium, I think, is what you're describing.
Exactly. I'm talking like another sentence.
Right.
I'm talking about wrapping code language.
Right, is that?
I think maybe too, that there's a, there's a piece of that, you know, just on this page, looking at eighty seven fifty, ninety two fifty and the stuff that was in there about having to use TDRs and the additional, how you go about getting square footage above thirty seven fifty to get even to fifty seven fifty to get to those larger numbers. That is sort of the inverse of the incentive, right? Like it like incentivizing. Larger numbers, that is sort of the inverse of the incentive, right? Like it, it, like incentivizing small homes. There is a high burden of acquiring. How you acquire that square footage, right? Through, through the use of these TDRs and we felt. It was reasonable to potentially create more TDRs through. Like locking in home size at, at that versus its total build out allowance. In the, in the residential sector, because we were creating a demand side that could soak it up, right? And uh. And maybe that's missing in there somehow too. If, if anybody found, they would just say.
Well, I totally faulted. And I think that's the problem with CGAC members. I mean, we see all of these things and then that gets us thinking of all the details and I. I see where you have to kind of just get it at a high level. And maybe that's as good as it gets, but I did notice what Manny was saying as well.
And, and that's, yeah, I mean, that is specifically, you know, the language on that one in, you know, from the comp plan, but. I think it's important, Michael, to note that these were just a couple of examples we pulled out. Um, and that, right, there's definitely more about TDRs and other, you know, places. There's more about the development standards and. Whether it's incentivizing or, you know, making things. So again, this was intended to be sort of a snapshot. But, but making sure you actually dig into the comp plan and look to see if you find. Those pieces that, you know, you're speaking to, to make sure that you feel like those are captures is really important.
And that, because we are at the draft phase, this is where the feedback from you all is so helpful to know. Where are some of those relationships really important to highlight as we pull out some of those examples to some Zant's point? And, you know, to Randy's point, where is some of that, you know, fundamental intent, really critical? Um, TDRs are a valuable tool for preserving the, the rural remote and, and preventing sprawl. Making sure we don't lose that. And I think it highlights some of the challenges with looking at some of the foundational tools where, you know, that is. Why TDRs are a foundational tool and making sure we don't lose that relationship here and connecting it to house sizes. Is really important. It's why we called out the housing priority for density in the UGV. In one of those foundational slides, so that when we got to the point to look at some potential changes to housing policy. We had that context. And that's what this slide is intended to do is bring forward the discussions that we've all had. That, that we've had with the board on when we're thinking about housing. It's a complex challenge. And so the why, the what and the how are something we wanted to, to frame up. Just to, to refresh all of our memories on the discussion that we've had and the fact that housing is. Uh, a very complex challenge that won't be solved unilaterally and brings in the need for some of those regional conversations that we've talked about. And also acknowledging one of the core tenants of the, the growth committee that. Doing nothing is not an option with lead growth and intensity pressures we're facing. And that there are some. Restrictive elements in the current code that can be reconciled to provide. Opportunities for some of that positive growth and positive intensity. Um, that brings us to the what, and this gets to some of the, the land use characteristics that we've talked about a lot in this meeting already. But acknowledging those enabling and limiting factors for affordable housing development. The community values and land use patterns are key, but also looking at infrastructure availability. And services, namely water, is a key factor in identifying, you know, where, if anywhere outside the UGV would be appropriate. For some very small scale community housing. And that's where the location characteristics and that type of use and the scale. Is a critical consideration. So that brings us to the house, some of the policies we're going to see based on our values. We'll see what's in the comp plan and that will lead us to the necessary detail on implementation and code updates. So with that context. Here's gonna walk us through a couple of the housing policy elements.
Um, so, and this hopefully you all can see is really reflective from the recommendations. That the growth committee brought forward as far as what would, what does it look like for? Um, housing outside the UGV. And then it still is really pretty restrictive when we look at the conditions that were recommended. As well as bringing in the water reliability and availability. And I think that the big point I want to highlight here is. There is not still, this is not opening up the floodgates. There is still not a lot of opportunity for um. For finding these housing sites. And what we're really talking about is, you know, where can we look at? Um, adding density next to existing community water systems or water districts. And some of this is coming from what we know is happening in other areas. Right? The, the standards for the water systems are so much higher than they were when they were built. And so somewhere even to. Maintain that affordability of what exists. A mechanism to make that is to be able to allow more housing there. And so trying to enable that as an option. The other is, um, you know, looking at where is it in close proximity to. To transportation and transit and in locations that. Um, avoid the presence of natural hazards and wildlife habitat. And so. When you start to funnel this down, what you really see is that. This is really talking about those clusters of, you know, small scale duplex, going to triplex locations. But where can this be possible? I think we had a conversation today. I also don't want to put any false. We don't have an illusion that the free market, by changing this, all of a sudden the free market is going to say, hey. That makes my pro forma workout really well and now I can do this. Um, I think really the goal is what came out of the growth committee and what is in, in the comp plan is. We've got a restrictive code. What are the different ways that? While we're not opening it all, starting to remove some of the different prohibitions to just incentivize and see where it might actually happen. And so that's where we look at, what is it, what are this, what are the parameters of what, uh, in which we would allow? Community housing outside the UGV. Um, what does it look like to incentivize CDUs and also enforce? Um, the current CDUs that are out there for occupancy, since we know a lot of those. Are not being utilized to the original um applic- application. Um, and then also talking about the extension of utilities to support that community housing. So we've in the past not. Um, had, I don't want to say a prohibition, we've very much limited the extension of utilities. This is going back to that upper part of. If there's that water availability and interest, where can we allow the extension of utilities? To meet that additional demand. Um, and, you know, I want to acknowledge that we had the similar conversation. This is the first of a conversation. Of going out to the community, going through this process with the comp plan, with P and C, with the community, but. This is hard. I know this is hard, right? This, this tugs at a lot of things when we talk about equity and affordability. When we talk about land use and rural preservation. And so what this is attempting to do is. Find a compromise of where is it that we can allow a little bit of housing? Where can we reduce some of the prohibitions? We've had in our land use code um as the first step in, in my, in enabling housing in the county. Um, and also recognizing, you know, if we go back to those intensity studies, what is the intensity that we are trying to manage for? You know, what is the discussion about these large homes over fifty seven fifty? What are those impacts versus a duplex or a triplex? What are those impacts in the community? Um, and so, you know, I opened it up for the conversation. We want to hear from you and I know that this is going to be a lot of the conversation. Throughout the next couple of months too.
Yeah. So with that, we'd love to hear your reactions on, on what you like most, where you see challenges, where you see gaps or additional needs for refinement. On that we haven't already discussed. And what do you think the community should know about this draft plan? We wanted to open it up for, for you all to discuss.
Could I say a few words about intensity? I read my PNCs or maybe not every word. But I have to say, I was really surprised that there at no time. Is it acknowledged that currently, single family homes are being used in different ways. Uh, I. I've uh been a, I think a constant critic of. Allowing single family homes to be used as lodges. Um, so I'm not a supporter of short term uses uh in single family residences. And I don't believe in all honesty that it's, it's what is envisioned under the land use code. So. All the appendices do focus on the amount of square footage, but they don't really. Have a discussion about how the residences are being used. Some of which I believe are consistent with how single family homes should be used and others which. I feel are not consistent.
Just so you know, Joe, the STR impact study is under.
Is coming.
Yeah. So I mean, so it's not ignored. I mean, yes, it's not in those intensity studies and, and yes.
I, I know.
Yeah.
You know, just, just to make a statement on behalf of Woody Creek. Just so everyone knows. Forty percent of the housing stock in Woody Creek right now, Stan, is affordable housing. And as each expansion has happened, heard in Woody Creek. We have been promised, I know that they're not held, but we have been promised by prior VOCs. That this is the last time the VOCs that have come to Woody Creek and say, we need to do a formal housing project in your area. And so there's, there, there, there's a lot of opposition. In Woody Creek to, to, to continue development of affordable housing in our area. Uh, because we feel like we have already contributed more than enough. So that, that's the first one. Um. Well, that, that, that would be my main.
Yeah. I'd comment on names um earlier if I'm in about exploring the TV though. Maybe the word explore is so weak. It doesn't sound like we use that thing. Now, that's just like aspirational. We're gonna explore something and then we're gonna move on to all this other stuff. I hope the word explorer, our first word descends is weak. And that, and that gives us. Yeah, I mean, picking up on that, I mean, I, I agree totally. Um, you, you know, and maybe it's about expanding the um. The definition of what a TDR is, right? It is to preserve rural lands, but it's also to. Incentivize um uh the preservation of existing housing stock. Or smaller stock for residents. Something like that, you know, to, to expand the definition of, of really what a TDR is meant, meant to do. Um, and again, I, I, I mean, I agree, Doug, Doug said it perfectly. And explore really is this kind of. Weak term and it really doesn't address one of the signature things that came out of the CGAC. So a little more oomph, good.
That's like Suzanne Cassidy.
I'm shocked Suzanne's not doing that.
She was heavy on them. Yeah, but that is a good point. We really tried to use not wishy washy uh action words, but you're right, that one is. That's a place where we could improve.
Thank you. One other, just quick comment on the, I liked. On the prior slide where we're talking about trying to do some intel to, to generate a little more. Um, affordable uh housing, kind of going to what, what the goals we're talking. I like the word that the first word in the sentence was enforce, because that's the big problem. And we've had a lack of enforcement. There needs to be voluntary compliance. As we, whether it stays at a thousand square feet or goes to fifteen hundred square feet, whatever it is. I mean, there needs to be a very um legitimate enforcement mechanism that needs to be. Voluntarily complied with in order to get one of these and create this, this additional stock that we're seeking. Cause otherwise it's just going to go to guest houses and there's, it's going to totally, just like what happened to. To uh caretaker units in the city. Absolutely the, the same thing. There's no enforcement mechanism. People built them. Well intentioned, maybe, but the use has been totally corrupted.
The other thing that I regret from the growth committee was. This um Brian Moore, I think, who brought it up mostly was. Not wanting to see all kinds of little communities all the way up to. That was, that was something that just uh, I'm really was strong on at the time, but and, and. Pretty, I think, building all these little infill things is not accountable to that exactly. But, you know, that is just something that's kind of been under the surface in this, hasn't thought about it at all and been, and. About that goal. And it was really strong in the final. By growth committee or leader perhaps, but I think there, there was definitely a discussion that the growth committee thought about, about keeping a buffer. You know, between lower valley rocks as well.
Joe, that's a, a great point. And that's where these bullets are designed to, to rein in, you know, some of that, that risk for sprawl and, and it. Goes back to finding that balance. And, and so the, the water was a, a big one on the proximity to transit. Further shrinks the potential for some of those little clusters of sprawl to be popping up. Um, and then locations avoiding the presence of natural hazard, wildlife further shrink it down. So we were, we were trying to put those parameters down. And then also call out a small sized, small scale to, to all of that too. But that's why as a draft. If there are other bullets that, that need to serve as some of those, those guardrails, um, that's, that's why we want to bring this forward to all of you.
Well, I, you know, I've always kind of countered that a little bit. I know where Glenn's coming, but coming from, but it's such a push and pull. I think there's some of that that we're gonna have to. Try and find a compromise on. And I think you're right, Miles. I don't think, I think we think that that opens it up, but there's very few places for that to really be possible. We may find out, especially with infrastructure, but there's no place that that's really possible or affordable. But I think we owe it to ourselves as a community to really sort through that and make sure if there are some little pockets that I get it. You know, we've all been here a long time, right? And we know what's happened to high rate two man. It feels completely different than the way it did. I'm willing to give up a little bit more of that if that means that the quality life, there's a majority of the residents here gets that much better. With traffic, with being able to live close to work with, I mean, all those things we had up there. Some of that could be solved a little bit if we're willing to give a little bit. And like I said. I don't think there's going to be that many areas where we'll be able to give a little bit. And. Secondly, on the affordable housing, I'd like to go back to your Woody Creek points. I get that and I don't want to count you at all. What I'd love to do in my heart is, is there a way to figure out a way that caucus areas are like? Boy, we'd love to be the next place that would take affordable housing. Which means that we'd have to find a way to either incentivize or convince you that there's enough attractive followings to having that affordable housing. Done right in those communities. Cause I get it. I'm sure if I lived there, I would be the same way as you. It's like, we've done enough, we've done. And these are, you know, and it sounds to me like you feel like it's a detriment. How can we make that feel like? Part of the thriving community that you are. And maybe it's not possible, but that's where, you know, my pie in the sky kind of attitude comes from is, is there a way to do that?
Okay, see, and I. No, I did say just the, the, the first half of your answer, um, and, you know, that. Is, I think, uh, indicative of the conversation that actually happened in the growth met or the growth advisory exam group. It was, there was this. Push, push and pull, absolutely.
Yeah. That's what so much of this represents is, is finding that right balance. And this is, is still a, a draft. Um, and.
Marcela.
Marcela, it looks like you would make, like to make a comment.
Yeah, I, I would. Um, so, so interesting about the, like Woody Creek, you know. Maybe opening themselves, selves up to uh affordable housing in, in their area. Our area, which is Maroon Creek Caucus, is, is very small. Uh, so we, we, we have de facto affordable housing, which is mostly tea lazy seven. And we have, uh, you know, CDUs, they're all occupied by employees. Do you really propose uh to obeson us and? Do you really propose, uh, to up zone us and, uh, put like fourplexes? Wondering.
I think what I'm proposing, which I, I mean, this is just me talking, is that we don't shut off the possibility that we look into all possibilities. I mean, I, I think most of us in this room would agree that it is one of the largest hurdles in our ballot is the affordable housing issue, right? All of the things that we have up there, fall leaves of life, a lot of that is the congestion of traffic, uh, vehicle miles burned, you know, over and over again, it comes to that. There's probably not.
Do, do you understand that, that our area actually voluntarily downs on itself to fifty seven fifty? Do you understand that? Do you understand that we're, we're, we're like the gateway to maroon balls?
My intention, once again, this is just me speaking. This is not for the comp plan. But my intention through the whole thing is to make sure that looking at every opportunity. And maybe your caucus is not an opportunity that is going to go in. And I can see a lot of negatives against it. And maybe Woody Creek is not as well. But I think what Kara was saying is we'd like to look into all those potentials to see what may be a possibility and what may not be. And unfortunately, maybe we'll come up with nothing. But I think we owe it to the community as whole to make sure that we do our due diligence.
Well, uh, uh, that's long been the charge and, and so, so there's been a failure on that front, of course. Um, okay. Thank you.
And any other thoughts, comments? I want to be mindful of time and, and, uh, this is a P and Z. So, um, what, what I do want to reiterate, and Zach made the point earlier, is this is the beginning of, of the conversations around the, the draft plan. So, um, there will be many more opportunities and we'll be relying upon the work group, working with P and Z, working with the VOC and working with the community to have these conversations as we move forward. So because we are running a little short on time, we're going to give a quick preview on some of those next steps that you can expect. And Riley and Mavis, I will be inside if I miss anything critical. But, um, really important to note that, um, the role of the work group is going to transition into supporting some of that community outreach. We're beginning this hard and important work on socializing the draft plan. And, and we will rely on all of our partners to do that. Um, at the same time, the P and Z is going to be deep diving in, into the plan itself. Um, a quick snapshot of some of the engagement materials that are, are going to be, um, going live, starting tomorrow. Um, there's going to be community surveying. There's some online tools, a story map that, that we'll be, um, previewing with the community. Um, and there's going to be a couple of engagement windows kicking up this week. You'll start seeing us around the community with some countywide pop ups, digital engagement, um, the surveys, the story maps, all sorts of tools. And we want to hear from all of you. If there are tools that would be very useful in having these conversations with your communities, let us know what they are. And we want to, we want to be your partner in doing some of that outreach. That will set up another push for community engagement in mid to late August where we're going to continue, um, developing, developing and sharing some of those materials. This is where the team is planning on some mapping shreds where we're going to look at some of the spatial map components of this. So, um, be on the lookout for what that may look like. And, um, this is also where the development of implementation plan will take place. Your work with the, the planning zoning commission. Anything I missed from the engagement team?
How, what, what are you thinking of how the representatives of the caucus area are part of this engagement with the, uh, community? All right. It looks like you could have pop ups or, and things like that. But how, what, what would you like us to do?
Thanks for asking, Manny. Yeah. Um, we would love you to push your constituents or, you know, your neighbors, your community, um, to the story map and dive into the draft comprehensive plan and take the survey and really just get involved. What, you know, what, if anything, are we missing? What did we, they need clarification on? Um, and then, you know, support it moving forward as we get towards adoption. Anything else? That's kind of the main.
And so for next steps, what we'll do is we'll, we'll be sharing out this information. We'll make sure that the work group gets first look at all of these materials as they're, they're launched and go live. And, um, we'll continue these conversations throughout the, the seven months. And with that, I want to see the floor back to our chair.
Well, and I just wanted to like to reach out to the caucuses and let them know that their master plans and their input are one of the most important tools and resources that we use to guide our decisions that we make through the planning zoning committee. So we're open to their input in, at any of our meetings. Where we take public comment or in, you know, that, the, those, that caucus input helps us guide our decisions, our planning and zoning decisions throughout the committee. So their input is extremely helpful. And then I would just like to thank everyone from the Vision Two Thousand Fifty Committee for all the hard work that they did. And I'd like to thank staff for their time, all the hard work that they put into this. And then I'd like to wrap it up, I guess. Yeah. So I would take, entertain a motion to adjourn if there's no further comment or anybody else has anything else.
I think one, one final comment, I guess, um, you know, just sitting thinking about this, we've been going through this for a long time. Where is the city of Aspen and, um, all the activity that's here in town? That's the big magnet that pulls all this stuff in. You know, how does that fit in? Is there some way that we get the city involved? Because at least in, you know, in a large part, that's the draw, right? The, the recreation, the ski mountains, the restaurants, the retail, the, the town is going, you know, is, is that growing like crazy? And we've got a bunch of big new projects coming online, lift one, the Borse House. So I don't know, I just toss that out because I think that's, that's really what's, you know, causing all the, all the development pressures in the county.
Right. When we talk about intensity there, the intensity is the city.
Is, is the city and, and the city's not involved in this process. I mean, maybe they're involved somehow, but, you know, there's not much we can do, right? There are no, their own jurisdiction, so they're going to do what they want to do. Anyway, I just tossed that out.
Or not.
Or not.
And I think that, that's a, a yes and, and it's exactly why we have the, the regional partnerships chapter in the new comp plan is to see these conversations, because we know a lot of the issues we're talking about don't start and stop at county lines. They involve all of our partners. So the regional component of this is critical, which is why it needs and gets its own chapter.
Thanks, Stan. That was, that's an impressive amount of work.
Thank you.